This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it's 6:06 PM. Sorry, we have technical difficulties. This is the Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, meeting of the Monterey Select Board, here in beautiful downtown Monterey Town Hall. We're going to jump right into it. The first item on the agenda here is Caleb Stone from the Southern Berkshire Volunteer Endurance. Are you here, Caleb?
Steve, can you say which selected?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. So I'm Stephen Weiss, the Chair. I'm here at Town Hall. Justin May Cook, President. Justin May Cook, President at Town Hall. It doesn't look like Don Landold is currently present.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you. Thank you, actually. So because we'll go back to Caleb if he appears. So let's go to item number two. Continue review of American Rescue Plan survey results. I think that... I know that there was some preliminary feedback when it came to Fiber Connect. And... Was there a proposal for the... I know that you had mentioned the pavilion at the community center. Has anybody ever priced something like that out? Do you know how much something like that is?
Not... I don't think that anything official has been done. It just came up in the survey.
Hey, Don. All right, well, obviously, that was one of those ones, right? And so I don't know who would be... Who should be tasked with... But seeing what... I don't even know what something like that would be... would cost. Well, do you want to do a little analysis? Is what we're talking about?
Do you want the quick estimate that I got from Adam on the broadband, or?
Sure, you can give it.
Okay, so he said it was all an estimate. It would assume that Fiber Connect pays the construction and only the make-ready is at question. The latest make-ready estimates have been coming back around $2,700 per pole on average, although he feels it should be under $1,000. For budget purposes, he would have to go by the $2,700. He said for River and Coreshire, it sped through Hartsville, and there are 78 poles needed to accommodate Coreshire and River. So that would put that around $210,600. And then another $55,000 to $60,000 for Crunk Road, which he said out to and across Sandusfield Road, which only needs a few poles.
So that would basically eat up?
It'd be about $270,000. And I think total, we're getting $276 or $278.
So in the Fiber Connect contract, it lists nine homes, including most of them on River and Coreshire, seven. And then one home on West Orange-Tierneyham Road, which I believe already is...
They've got Fiber in Montreal, probably.
Just the one home on Tierneyham Road, and actually Tierneyham Town Line, is that wired?
Yeah.
That's mentioned in the contract.
But isn't that Godington Station?
No.
No, no.
On Tierneyham?
On Tierneyham Road, almost into Tierneyham. There's one home.
I'll find out about that.
I don't... It didn't mention any homes on Crunk in the contract. Is that because that's a new home or something?
Oh, are you talking about the house that's being built? Yeah, is that a new...
He doesn't specify, but I will clarify.
They know one house is being constructed, I think. Well, I would just wonder, in the... I haven't read the contract carefully enough, and I'm not a lawyer to know. But when it mentioned the nine excluded homes, if someone builds a new home and it's not where they're already wired, that doesn't count in what they... Guarantee was?
Right. The state wanted... The state has a list of all of property... of all of properties. And it had supplied them with it. And then it was based on that, whatever that listing was. And that's my understanding of it. And if that is different, then Adam can jump in. So yeah, no, if people buy... if people wire new houses, there's no...
There's no guarantee in our contract.
There's no guarantee. No, there's no guarantee. And there's no guarantee. Yeah. And yeah, the same thing with the timeline. You get a certain timeline, but you know, there's no guarantee. So I guess the idea is trying to find out how much money it would cost. If it wipes out everything, is it worth it? I think there's a number of things that we can do with that, with those funds. I just didn't know whether it was going to be $50,000 or $500,000. And that's... I think that was the term of the fight, why we asked them to make a determination of it.
And as Adam mentioned, the houses on River Road and Coreshire Road already get their electricity from the law, right?
Right.
And that estimate was for putting poles all the way down that don't exist for Monterey?
Right. That's the challenge. You'd have to basically put, right, put a bunch of poles.
He said there are some options where you could issue pole easements. He's just estimating right now. If you want, you know, to talk about this further, I can have them come in and you guys can really... I just wanted you to have a thought.
But also, my understanding that we received notifications from Spectrum that they were willing to wire some people back from...
They wanted to, remember? And you told them they needed to come in and do a contract? And then we never heard anything more from them?
I've had dialogue with one specific homeowner on that. And I haven't spoken to that individual since. So let me reach out to that individual. I find out what the deal is.
Because if we... if that could be worked out, that would take care of seven of the eight that I'm aware of. I'm not aware of what's going on on Crunk Road. And also, I don't know whether the one home on Tierneyham Road is wired or not.
Right. Okay. And in the meantime, you'll get us a general idea of what a pavilion would cost for the community center. And I know there were some other ideas that we're all throwing about here. I'm glad it's coming in at the same time we're talking about budgets, because there may be a way of doing some augmentation. But anyway, okay, so let's continue. Item number three, discussion of the draft of public documents posting the town website policy. So the only change that I had, Dustin... I've got no problem with your changes. The only thing that I have is I would like to have an inclusion that we make it into... Now, it goes on the town website, but posted at least in the minimum in Town Hall. I'm very concerned about folks that are not computer savvy or, you know... And I think for the next few years, there needs to be a bridge between what people were used to and what, you know, and what we're transitioning into. And I would hate to tell somebody who is not computer savvy, you know, "Hey, you're out of luck." It actually adds an additional burden to the government and the town administrator, but I think it's worth it. We're talking about transparency here. Obviously, transparency issues. And so anything that will, you know, I think this will help.
My only concern... I think that it would be good to post on both the website and the bulletin board at Town Hall. My only concern is that I believe the state can only recognize one legal posting place, if I'm not mistaken, from our discussion back in this spring, summer.
And that's fine. We can make the legal posting place the website, but I want... but I would like in language to... And that's the only thing that I added into the language, is to also identify Town Hall as a posting site, as an official posting site.
Yeah.
So that... I mean, I've got no problem with just having the state recognize that the website is. But I'm just... I just want to make sure that it's in there saying, "Listen, this is what we got to do." Website and in Town Hall. So at least people know, you don't have a computer or you don't have access to a computer or something like this. You can come into... you can at least come to Town Hall and see it.
So unless are computer savvy and don't have access to the internet, that has nothing to do necessarily with being computer savvy. Has to also with connectivity. And I'll give you an example. My wife is in Boston right now because she needs reliable Zoom service, which we don't have yet. And she's not going to sit at the library or the firehouse in this cold weather. So until this Fiber Connect is up and running, I think that this town owes it to the residents who don't have connectivity to be able to post non-computer savvy.
So do you have any problem with adding that, just those words, and Town Hall?
Yeah. I mean... Just, I don't think that we can make most places legally the posting place. I think that shouldn't make... reduce the effort at all to post on the bulletin board for people who don't have access to the internet. But that's just not, to my understanding, something that is...
Right. So, okay, so the only... So in the second page, the last one that I made the change, which says the town website... Or you can make it separate bullet point where it just says... It just basically says, "The town website is the legal posting place." Period. Just make another bullet point. And then the rest of it, all of our requests to put it on the bulletin board is still in the language, but it satisfies exactly... it makes it very clear that the town website is the legal posting place.
What I would do is remove Town Hall from every other mention and mention it from every mention of the legal posting place or the legally recognized posting place and mention it once. The bulletin board outside of Town Hall shall be kept updated for the convenience of the public.
Okay, but in the procedures, we're talking about procedures. If you want to, the bulletin board, if you set up the date, that we want it part of the procedures. So that somebody... Let's say we have somebody else in the clerk's office, and they're reading the procedure, the policy that we just made here. They're going to see, "Oh, well, procedurally, I've got to print it out, put it on the bulletin board, put it on the website." That's part of the policy.
Yep. So, yeah. I mean, I think that's good. I think the more places you post it, the better.
So if you just put one bullet point somewhere, or wherever it is, saying that the legal posting place is the town website, that takes care of everything else. Because then we're still telling people, you still use... or as a clerk of the town administrator, you still got to post it on the bulletin board. But regardless... I almost said "regardless." Regardless, it's not... it's not making it not the legal place.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with you.
So can we just... so... So yeah, so this bulletin board part here... If you just... if we put one bullet... one more bullet point in there saying that the website is the county's legal, official, legal town website... Posting place, I think will be... I think will be in good shape.
Yep.
All right. Do you want to... So that's... Clear. So here, if you put it... I mean, you can put it in the first... put it right up here if you want to. I mean, it would probably be purpose intended to. And then say, "Note, the town website is the legal..."
Why don't we do it under bulletin board? Where we talked about town website, Town Hall are the legal. Note that the town website is the legal posting place. Sure, the purpose of the opening, yeah.
Okay. We got a policy. Great. Number...
Do you want to make a motion to approve?
I'm sorry?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Sorry. Thank you very much. I make a motion to approve, considering your attention. I make a motion to approve the policy, the policy statement as amended by Justin and myself for the posting of information. Second. Yes?
Yes.
Agenda posting policy. So this was...
Shall we wing it?
Flip flop.
You did four first. You're going to do three now?
What?
You need to do item three. You did four first.
I did. Can you... So this is the town web... Oh, all right. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. You have to do that. So I have to do number four, so I'm doing number three now. Sorry. The discussion draft, of draft public documents posting to town website policy. I think this cuts off the oxygen to my brain. Or maybe it's getting stupid.
It's going more than that.
Yeah, it might be. It might be more than that. All right.
Message you.
Don't put that in the minutes. All right. So yes. So now it's been... so you were going to look at it and...
Yeah, I couldn't... What I did to the policy is I went over it myself and tried to make it clear, based on our conversation last week. And I ran it by some people who helped me make it read more smoothly. I can read it differently. I think the gist of it is the same as where we left off last week.
It looks like the town... Encourage expense. Dustin, no, I see what you did. It's fine. It's fine. I accept it as per your changes. Second. I make a motion to exempt it after your changes. You seconded it. I said, "Yes."
Yes.
Okay, new business. Item number one. Town Administrator Adams contacting councilman policy with specific contact requests. So I received it. And so I just added... So we were going to add... or the request was to add the town administrator should be exempt from the provision, the division providing... Providing she knows how the work is up to currently. And I added, "And provides the select board with topics of our sponsor." So that does exactly what I think we had a discussion about. And there are some issues that are either time sensitive or they're limited to the immediate needs of the town. This has been the town administrator and the administrative assistant. Both have been well-ensuised, as well as their task force. The idea is... But the idea is that we have an understanding of what is being...
I understand, since we made an exception for the building commissioner in the initial policy, why there's a tendency to want to make other exceptions. But I think part of the reason why I was favorable to making an exception to the building commissioner is that his building questions are probably very specific to his department. And he's not... I mean, he's a part-time employee who mostly works in the evenings, at least within Town Hall. That's my office area. I don't see the need to make the same... This exception from the policy. Because I feel like the town administrator and the select board chair, you know, should have a reasonable chain of communication. And so if there's a time-sensitive request, then the policy allows for that as long as the town administrator just notifies the select board chair. And so I don't see a reason to make another exception to this policy.
So you... So would it be fair to say you're... Okay, so we're adding in another step to this process. If there's a legal matter... Because listen, at one point, you're going to be the chair. At some point in the future. So that if there's a legal matter that is imminent, you would expect the town administrator to contact you. Let's say you were the chair. And then wait for... and then we'll have to get to the view, get your response so that the town administrator can go ahead and contact legal.
Yeah, I think when I look at the... I don't know if it's called a preamble to the document, but the "whereas" is, whereas the town of Monterey through its select board directs and supervises the use of town council, whereas the select board intends to identify appropriate use of town council's time with an appropriate protocol. I think the idea is that there's a constant... Or there's a chain of communication so that the select board supervises all use of council. And I understand that, you know, we made an exception for the building commissioner, who I don't think is going... Who is not going to, you know, use town council's time a lot because he really doesn't have that many requests. When I last spoke to him, he hadn't had a request since December. So that's not really going to fall in here. But I think in general, any other department or board, it should all have that channel of communication and should all be passed through this life board because it just makes it the one body overseeing. Otherwise, and I'm not going to blame anyone in particular, but when we were reached out to and said they were receiving too many communications, I didn't, as a member of the select board, who we had signed an engagement letter with them, I didn't even know, you know, why... Or what... why there are too many communications or what was being sent. So I don't really want to make any more exceptions when the policy already, you know, takes care if there's something of a time-sensitive nature, check with the select board chair. And it's also, you know, just for a person who may... You know, just to be able to... I just feel like the purpose of the policy is for the select board to oversee use of town council.
So the town administrator has four specific legal questions with regards to vaccination to COVID policy. I personally... I think the town administrator is more equipped to ask and receive these answers. I'd be more than happy to put it in an email form, but ultimately, I'm going to send it to the town administrator. And I would still... I would like to make a motion just to allow the town administrator to ask... You heard the question that was presented to the board in the last meeting?
The four questions, yeah.
Four questions?
Is that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to allow the town administrator to ask the town council these and receive these answers to these four questions.
Second.
Does that eliminate the information to the...
Second.
Okay, I vote yes?
Yes.
Four questions. Like passover. All right.
Good. One question with four answers.
All right. Budget item review, general. So... So a little... okay, so is this just...
So tonight, I was just giving you the two items that I typically make recommendations to you guys, and then you decide on them. Next week, I'm going to give you all the departments to go over so that we can prepare something to go over with the finance committee. These are all the general ones, you know, select board expenses, myself, grant writers, meeting warrants, town operating expenses, Memorial Day, the town report, and then the loans, health insurance, retirement, life insurance, regular insurance. If you wanted, you know, take them and digest them and wait till next week, we can do all of them next week.
Yeah. Let me take a look at... Let me have time to take a look at them. And it also seems like, well, school numbers you're not going to get.
Right.
So I obviously got all excited about some of the preliminary budget meetings and sent in some comments about all of the budget. But for this particular section...
So... So budgeting, so I'm glad you're getting involved from the beginning, the town administrator and the chair of the finance committee. I found budget... I find... I personally find budgeting fascinating because it is not as black and white as anybody would lead you to believe. You have to be part... It's part finance and it's part an understanding of how the town spends money and where... And also kind of an eye of what's going to happen down the road, if we don't know. It's more like hoping for the best, but planning for the worst. So we want to have to get to a discussion of it. Rather, I'd like to take some time with it. You want to go through the rest of the items and see if...
For the budget? Or do you want to go through the rest?
I'm going to go through the rest of the... A lot of other items.
Yeah. Yeah, and then we can circle back and see how exhausted or non-exhausted we are.
So let's do that. How about some good news?
Yes.
And that would be the cybersecurity grant award.
Just wanted to let you guys know that we did receive the grant. I'm working with them right now to set everything up. It'll be a program that they will send emails to everybody that has a montereyama.gov email address and teach and test us on. People know the difference between a spam email and a...
Oh, so they're going to do kind of online training?
Well, they're going to send you things and see... I guess it's trackable as to who opens what, who clicks on a link that they shouldn't click on and...
Because I think they sent me something, but I didn't...
I guess.
I was already suspicious about it.
I haven't given them the email yet.
Really? Okay. Well, then, good. No, I mean, it's...
I'm still setting it all up with them.
Okay, that's good. How much was the grant for?
It's not an amount. It's a program that you... It's not an amount, it's a, it's a program that you, they and that you get into, I guess, is the best way to say it.
All right, good. We have to be, we need to be ever vigilant. So can I go to the minutes of 1:52? I, I reckon I didn't have any changes. Apparently you had some changes, so let's see what they were. If you took out that one, it was affordable housing. Why did you want to?
I, I thought the most, I thought the top four things that we noted last week were, we talked about broadband, affordable housing came up in the ARPA service, and then, or top three, constructing an outdoor gathering space at the community center.
So I, we both noted that. Maybe not common suggestions, just noted that.
Most frequent.
Most frequent suggestions, yeah, for broadband. All right, the next one, the board reviews and relevant guidance from the position of government. The guidance says, the name of the appointee included on the agenda, working with them for eight hours. Okay, well, right, so this is where I actually wrote something and I didn't write it because I think it's important in number two to also identify the fact that we did not, because we before, we were accused by another select board member of doing something illegal by not posting the name of the appointee. And I think it should be important in the minutes to identify that if you don't know the name. So how about, so that the board was justified in something like that, that claimants can be made without a name on the agenda.
If it's not reasonably anticipated by the chair.
If, if, if not known, let's bring it out. I mean, that was. I mean, that was, that was it. Don't dump it on the chair because that, that position rotates, so.
Do you see what it's like at home?
No, I know what it's like at home. Giving my, giving my taxes and this.
That's what I was wondering, without a name on the agenda if it is not reasonably anticipated for eight hours in advance.
Perfect. Good, good. Okay, I definitely have to help these, to answer a request from, oh, that's fine. These are very consistent, so who was given permission last week? I was, why didn't I take it out?
In the.
I, because, because, only because in the last minutes, there was a discussion about how I may have, you know, gone beyond the realm and I was, and I was apologetic, so.
But that was the week before.
That was the week before, so I'm saying that if now, it sounds like I just did it again.
Okay.
So now I am, right? Because somebody's following the minutes, they'd be like, oh, there he goes again.
Yeah, so I'll put, put that back in.
I want to, I want to leave this, this board with some. Maybe like, not for government, you know, come back. All right. And we provide a consultation, commission three motion requests, okay, three instead of three? Or did you take out three altogether?
I, I just wrote out three. Which I didn't do now here. I'm inconsistent.
Determined not to be applicable. As the record, John's request doesn't exist. Not to be appealable. All right.
Not to be appealable, and therefore the state is supposed to.
Okay, last thing, what's the?
Just to take.
Amendment to current time. Go in the board. Ask this request to come. Okay, could I make a motion to accept the minutes of 1:52 with each of the amendments that the section has made and I have agreed to?
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Review mail, any correspondence to be tendered, signed. I have a letter from Wendy Germaine. Resignation to cultural council, as above data, resigning as member of cultural council. It's been pleasure and honor to serve our town's capacity. I wish you cultural council the best wishes for the new year, Wendy Germaine. How many people on the, on, that's too bad. Wendy was a good voice on it. So they have, how many, do you, do you, do you know most of how many vacancies they have on the cultural council? Love to put that in there.
I don't know how many people are on it.
Okay.
Currently have five people.
Currently have five, oh, so even with the vacancies, they have five people?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, generally you want more, I don't know if you ever, you know, one of those cultural council things that, you know, they have to, they have to, where they give the grants, it is a very difficult job that they do with cultural council. So the more people, the better. I would make a request that people consider joining the cultural. Okay. So. There's a series of, there's a series of back and forth emails over here, Justin. John Silverberg email, John Miller email, there's a lot of emails going back and forth about, about how to go on the finance committee. I, while I, I've got no problem having them available to the public, for the public federation, I think they can be addressed by very simple things. And that is generally in the history of Monterey, the finance committee, finance committee is a wonderful check and balance to the select board during the budget. But that's the finance committee as a whole. Just like individual select board members are not going to, won't go to a finance committee meeting and say, well, the select board said this and select board said that. Obviously, individual finance committee members should not be doing that to the select board as well. We're both, we're both have, we're both under the same rules and regulations of the main law. But also the thing is that we built a function as a board. When we start having individuals throw their ideas around, it's not a positive thing because you want to get everybody's, you want to get everybody's opinion. And everybody's not going to agree. So my recommendation is to enter these items into, into the record for public, for public consumption. And just, and just end with the, that, that, that we are moving forward, they, having the two boards work together for the benefit of the Monterey and the Monterey budget. I understand we're doing that on the 26th of January, we're having, is that what we're doing?
I think that's what we're shooting for, yes.
Right, so we're shooting for 26th, so instead of getting a kind of a he said, she said type of thing, it's not, it's not going to, you're not going to come up with any, with any kind of valuable material by reading some of these, some of these comments. But we will make it public for the public, so we're not, we're not, by then, people should read what's going on. But we work as two boards. We don't work as individuals. We try not to. Is that, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I agree that some, some suggestions about the budget obviously will be taken out by the select board as a whole and the finance committee as a whole.
So, but if somebody makes, I mean, you just think that. So again, you, you have a finance committee board and you have a select board. If one individual is saying, well, I want to tell you what I think. And then they go ahead and they cop, and they, they, this is what happened, actually. We had one individual, I'm not even naming, we had one individual that actually copied off the other board members that included the conversation between you and them. If that's not a violation of the open mind, or no it is. I, so I'm, so I'm, but I'm, so I'm concerned. And by the way, that other per individual's violation of the open mind, not you. So I'm concerned about these emails and these email threads and I'm also concerned about people throwing their individual weight around. I'm telling you, Justin, that nobody is an expert at the Monterey budget. No matter how smart they sound, nobody is an expert. And you cannot, you cannot perfectly budget a town like this because you're going to have, you know, a very good example is the, is, is, is highway, is highway. If we, we have to, we have to almost purposely overbudget. I hate the word overbudget because it's not really an accurate term. Because you have to, because you're planning, because you're hoping for the best, but you're planning for the worst. So we have to buy enough salt and sand, let's say, we'll use that as an example, or have that money budgeted for salt and sand. And so you don't want to ever run short. Now, we can do emergency purchasing and things like this. But in other words, there are some things where you budget for, 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 for the worst times. You don't budget for the best times because then you get caught short. You don't want to get caught short, right? So, so, but so when people throw around that, well, you know, you guys spend a lot of money like you're, I, we purchased the board, you spend money like a drunken sailor. That's certainly not true. But we do budget in anticipation of the worst-case scenarios because we don't have, because we don't have the capacity to say, wait a minute, wait a minute, we're just going to run down a check, you can't do either of those things. So, so I would, so that's why I, I just keep the, you know, so, you know, keep your, keep, keep it open mind, talk to people that have gone through before. But, but again, when somebody says you're doing it the wrong way, I immediately don't agree because, because this is not a right and wrong. This is, you try to make it, you try to make it as good as possible, but you're not going to get everything right, and in retrospect, you go back to a former budget and, and, and do a Monday morning quarterbacking of, well, how did, how did your budget work out? Well, you, you blew it on this, you blew it on that. That's not fair because again, no one knows what the situation is. In 2019, we budgeted for a normal 2020 and then COVID did. Something, we spent something pretty different. Now in the middle of COVID, this COVID, and hopefully I would expect that COVID is going to be gone, gone tomorrow. But we can't not budget for it because we don't know when it's going to be gone or, you know, or how it was going to go. So anyway, that's, that's my speech on, on budgeting. But we will make it available to the public so they can, they can see what's, what's going on. Is there anything, is there anything?
No, I think I would add, I think that's sufficient for the finance suggestions and recommendations, we can deal with them in joint meetings with the finance committee. I think one of the email threads revolved around people reiterating something that someone said and then saying they didn't say it. And I think it's a lot safer and makes more sense for everyone involved. If someone wants to communicate with the board, please either put it in writing or come and speak to the board. I think it's kind of goes along with our anonymous communication policy where we don't really accept anonymous communications because it, this protects both the person who's communicating to the board and the person who's the intermediate from accusations of saying something that they didn't say, or the person twisting their words. So I would just say, if you want, if we want, if someone wants to communicate with the select board, like Caleb Stone, he wrote us a letter and he was planning on, and probably will at some point come in and speak with us. I think that's the, the best way to do it. And it just protects everyone and then we don't have to deal with different sides of the story. And I know sometimes things come up and, well, I think I even said tonight, when I talked to Don Torrico, he said he hadn't contacted council since December or something, a few, when I talked to him a few months ago. But, if I'm not perfect. And I just think, especially when something negative or controversial comes up though, it's good to stray away from it and then we don't have any issues, that's all.
And watch the threads. Don't, don't, don't just reply and shit. All right, good, well put. Is there anything else that I'm, that we're focusing, no? Anybody from the audience would like to say anything?
I would like to return to ARPA if we have a minute.
Sure.
I know we got the survey results back and Caleb is going to come in and speak to us and we're looking into broadband and the community center. Maybe when we have a little bit more information on all these things, we could schedule a meeting where it's the only item on the agenda. That way, if the public wants to be heard on that issue, we could publicize it as like a American Rescue Plan Act funding meeting. And it would also give the board time to really sit down as the only agenda item. But maybe that makes more sense to do once we have a little bit more background information.
I would also suggest, do you talk, do you know anybody on the, let's say, the Great Barrington select board?
No.
I would also suggest that, I did, I know, I have two people. The reason why I'm saying Great Barrington is because we had a situation with the ambulance service where, I don't know, was last year or the year before, where they were asking for a fair amount of money and Great Barrington, and they said, well, Great Barrington's giving us X number of dollars. And then we got, we got the communication with Great Barrington and it said, no, we're not. So I'd really like to know from Great Barrington. At least Great Barrington, but maybe some other towns, who is, are people giving?
We've done the budget.
You know, we've done the budget. People giving what was being, what's being requested, what we did.
I'm going to bow out.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down.
Thanks for having us on the meeting.
Sorry to make it more exciting for you.
It was as exciting as I expected it to be.
Good.
Have a good night. I hope so.
And I see they, they somewhat did the same thing here where they brought a table out with the seven towns, or the six towns. And they mentioned Monterey, ARPA funds equal 276,190. Is that what the key was?
I, yes, I believe we were getting it in two payments. We got one now and then we're getting it on if it's next year or, so we have 197.
Okay, I.
A little check on about, they.
It's, it's a public information, so they're, you know.
Well, I was curious where they got that number from because I had only, was thinking about the first payment.
I don't know where they got the percentage from though.
Well, the percentage is, yeah, it, it's, it's sort of an interesting thing because they're actually saying, well, you know, this is how much you're getting and so we want to take X number of percent from what you're getting. Well, generally, if somebody's asking me for money, they tell me what they need and why they need it. And, and, and it, it, we're like, well, you've got, you've got some money in your pocket, so we're going to, so we want part of that. And I understand. And I understand that, that they have, they have financial needs. I, I'm very interested to know what the other towns are, how they're responding to this, and I'm gonna, I will definitely contact, I mean, at least the folks I know in Barrington, and see what their response is, because I know the response was not, was not a positive response last year. At least not my understanding, or it was the year before, what they said.
Yeah.
So. So the more information we get, the better. Yes, that's, that's what I want. Is there, is there anything else? I mean, there's other ideas for, for, for us on the.
Well, I was just thinking, if we, if it, if time allowed with the budget and everything like that, if we were able to let the public know a bit in advance and just have a, an ARPA select board meeting, it may be really good for us and, and for the public. And maybe that's two separate meetings, but when it's one of, you know, 10 items on an agenda, it may get passed over, and right now, we're, you know, we're, we're learning a little bit more about costs of certain things, but I think at some point, that might be helpful to me, at least.
I would recommend at the beginning, while we're, we're a little further to the budget, so that we understand how, you know, because there might be, listen, there might be, there might be a little bit of budget.
We have till 2024, I believe, to spend these funds, so there's no.
Oh, really?
There's no rush to.
I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah, there's no rush to, to spend them.
I thought it was like the other COVID money where it was like.
No, this one had a lot longer expiration date on it.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I love Justin's ideas. Sorry about the reverb. I'm wondering if, I, I love the idea of a public meeting dedicated to that. I, I wonder if, if we have the time, A, waiting for warm weather might be helpful, because we could do it outside, so more people could attend safely, but B, if you brainstorm, if you have some stuff already, if you could write something up and maybe put it up in the Monterey news while mentioning when the discussion is gonna be, that could sort of get people thinking about stuff? Like putting forward some ideas for them to think about, so they come to the meeting with a little information and already thinking about it. Might make it even more productive.
Yeah, so quick look, it says the plans must be made by December of 2024, and the money has to be spent by September 30th, 2026.
So we got a little time.
You guys don't have to.
Oh, really? Oh, so, so if you wanted to use them like to put up a statue of me in front of Mount Palm, you could actually do that. Kind of the cast. All right, so, yeah, so it's good. We're not under a time pressure, we wanna do it right. However, we, on the other hand, maybe, maybe there are some things, again, you don't, you don't have to spend all of it right away, you know, we can come up with some, some ideas. And tell the public about it. Is there, is there anything else out there in public land? Anybody wanna say anything else? No?
I have a question about meeting next week. Do executive session minutes need to be drafted and approved in executive session, or can that happen in open meetings?
So, okay, so, so if, if you're, if, so if the exec, so if we're talking about, you're talking about the, the executive session of, and for, of, I think.
You know, I was.
Only because, remember, that executive session is part of the, is part of that investigation. So, and we were advised by council that we don't have to disseminate, which would include drafting and, and, and delivering any information of, of executive sessions that, that interfere, or that, that are, that interfere, that, that are part of the investigation. However, once the investigation is concluded, yes, we, we do need to provide them with, and as far as drafting them, you know, you can't, I don't think you can do it in an open session, because then you're talking about the executive session. I don't know how that would, I don't know how that would work. That, that I think we should, we should get some guidance on, because you don't wanna do it incorrectly.
Yeah.
But, but the urgency of it, because I understand there are some people are pushing for it. The urgency of it, there's, it, it, it's part of the investigation. I mean, that's, that's just the long and short of it.
So how can a request for executive session minutes be responded to by the board?
Just exactly the way, I'm sorry to cut you off, exactly the way we responded to the conservation commission, who made a very similar request.
So it says right here in the open meeting law, if the body previously determined that executive session minutes should remain confidential because publication would defeat the lawful purposes of the executive session, it should respond by stating the reason the minutes continue to be withheld. Right from the open meeting law guide.
So, I mean, so should, should we designate a person to respond to, well, but we have to discuss whether or not the minutes are contested, we have to discuss that and executive session, I mean, I mean, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out exactly. I, I agree, right?
So, so I think a one line, I mean, because what we're just talking about right now is not, none of it is part of the executive session, we're just talking, so I think we can, you need the board to make a statement right now, saying that minutes of the executive session for, for October 4th, 2021 will not be disseminated until after, until after the, the existing investigation has concluded, and this is on the advice of council. And that's it. I think it's reasonable, and obviously, if somebody contacted council, they really had an about it. But I mean, I think, I think that would be it, or the board can just make the one line, on the advice of council.
Well, I didn't receive that advice, you did, right?
Uh, yes, but I was acting, that, I was acting on behalf of, the question was on behalf of the board, so.
Understood, but I, I didn't, I didn't receive that advice.
You can, you can require from, from council if you like.
Well, I don't doubt it, it seems common sense to me. Would you be able to respond to that request since you have that advice from council?
We'd like for you to respond to.
Well, it's, it's a response from the whole board, right? Regardless of who sends it, but since you were personally the one who received the advice from council, would you be willing to respond?
Yes, if you wanna make, you wanna make.
Because the board.
If you wanna make a motion right now, as, if you wanna make a motion, that I respond as, as, as a representative of the board responsible, I just gave you, if you wanna make this term to a motion, then that would be fine, because then it's not me just
Yeah.
going individually, it's the board has given me the.
Yeah. So I will motion that Steve will respond to, on behalf of the board, will respond to requests for executive session minutes.
Of?
Of, of October 4th.
And, and, okay, so I, I vote, I, I second that motion.
I vote yes.
I vote yes. And, uh, if you're gonna make, wanna make motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I second that motion to adjourn. I vote yes.
Yes.
For adjourn, thank you, Susan, and everybody for coming.